Dr. Tom, Special City Council Meeting to order. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing, here. Mayor Pro Tem Carol Dodge, here. Councilmember Snetsinger, here. Councilmember Malika. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Carrico.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman, here. Councilmember Winnicky.
There.
All right, would you please...
That was ESP. ESP, you were just...
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is just a special night tonight, so we're all just in a really good mood, so... Thanks, everybody, for coming. Next on the agenda is Agenda Additions or Deletions. Is there any that the council has? Seeing none, okay. The first thing we have is I would ask council to come down to the front with me that we would recognize Wally Hill. Wally, can you come on? You need to speak up. Speak up. All right. Okay, you want to come? Can you come up this way?
Yeah. I'm here, but...
I have the same problem.
So don't worry about it. Okay. Wally, we are so excited to have you here this evening. You know, we recognize all the hours and years that you've put in for, you know, special volunteer for the city of Northland in many boards. You know, we do appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
And we thank you for coming. So we have a proclamation that we want to read to you.
Okay.
Okay, and then afterwards, and Joe has something in his hand he wants to give you, as well as, I want you to kind of go around and shake hands with the city council. Can you do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. You know, the chief of police told me about you. You know, so... I know, I know you like to ride in the police car.
Yeah.
But the cyber is not a thing he's not going to let you do. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
But we all appreciate everything you've done.
I do.
Wallace "Wally" Hill has built a solid reputation as being a committed volunteer, serving many organizations with an enthusiasm and dedication that is respected by all who know him. And whereas Wally is a World War II veteran, a retired veteran of the United States Marine Corps, and the first and only honorary police officer of the Northland Police Department. And whereas after graduating from the inaugural Citizen's Police Academy in 1998, Wally began volunteering with the Northland Police Department, and has assisted with community presentations, the department's weaponry and range program, and the citizen, teen, and senior police academies. And he continues to be a great part of the department's pawn slip processing. And whereas while Wally served the city of Northland as a member of the Election Commission for over 16 years...
Wow.
...providing integrity and consistency to election processes, and always offering to be of service to the city clerk's office. And whereas Wally's dedicated commitment to his community also includes serving 50 years as a Mason with the Colorado Mason Fraternity, and receiving the 2015 Adams-Brumfield County Liberty Bell Award for outstanding service by a citizen. Wow. And whereas the Northland City Council applauds Wally's contributions and volunteerism, and wishes to recognize and thank him for giving so freely of his time and energy for the betterment of the community. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the city of Northland, Colorado, hereby proclaim May 18th, 2015, as Wally Hill Dick. This is your day. Now for his selflessness, tireless service, and dedication to the city of Northland, the Northland Police Department, and the community. Dated at Northland, Colorado, this 18th day of May, 2015. Thank you so much for everything.
Thanks a lot. I'm still glad to be here.
We're glad you're here, Joe. We have a little gift from the city council that he just brought up. This is a little gift from us to you. Okay. And you don't want me to take that and give it to one of your family members?
Yeah, sure. Just open this.
You want to open it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
It's dirty, so don't open it.
And we know you like to go to Perkins', and so we just gave a little gift card, you know, so...
Yeah.
I'll give this to your daughter.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Wally.
You're welcome.
Do you want to say hello to the council?
Yes.
Okay. You say it right ahead. All right.
Glad to see you. Long time.
Yeah, I know. I'll make it our visit check.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, you're a big celebrity today.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Take a birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Gosh. Congratulations, you're so lucky, the day after... Congratulations and thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We just want to thank everybody for coming, also to support Wally. You know, he really is an inspiration to all of us, for all who has done throughout the years, so thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we have a SafeBuild Scholarship, and to present this is Eric Pendley, Chad Johnson, and Monica Bordenash. You want to come up?
Yeah.
Come on up. I'm going to kind of let you guys do this.
This is a...
Oh, no, it's not. All right, so... Well, hopefully, let's see. If not, we're going to... I know. You can give it to me. So is Adam Nelson here? Adam? Let's see. If Adam's not here, I guess we'll do this... Next one up. No? Is that here yet? So I guess we can put it in the pocket when you see him.
Yes.
Give me a high sign. All right, okay. We're just faster than... All right. As soon as... Just give me the right sign. All right. You did well.
It was rain.
Oh, okay. We knew Wally had to leave, you know, a little bit sooner, because he was, you know, he's kind of like a little tired today, so... All right, so first, next on the agenda is the 2014 Audit. Jason, are you doing this, or...
I'm going to introduce it.
All right.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, Jason Loveland, Director of Finance. Each year, the city contracts with an independent auditor to perform an audit. This is pursuant to Section 8.4 of the city charter. The essential element of the audit is that it provides a process for accountability and is an important contribution to the stewardship of our public resources. Tonight, Representative from McGlady, our auditor, Kristen Hughes is here, and she's going to go over the results of the audit for 2014.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I've put together, I think you have a few documents in front of you. You have the city's financial report, the CAFER, and then also the staple packet is our summary of our report to you as well. But what we've done is, I've just put together a PowerPoint that just is going to kind of go through each of those documents at a summary level. Feel free to interrupt. If you have any questions, you can save for the end, or you can interrupt me if you think of something as I go.
All right.
So as I noted, we're just going to go through a summary of the 2014 financial performance, primarily compared a few measures to the prior year, as well as our required communications from the audit firm. So here at a summary level for the governmental funds is a summary of the revenue in 2014 compared to 2013. So you'll see in the current year, there was an increase in 2014 compared to the prior year. Revenue went up approximately $1.7 million, or 6%. In the categories there, I don't know how well you can read those, but in the blue, which is the taxes, the majority of the increase was seen in the tax category, as well as there was better investment returns in 2014 on the investments that the city holds. But the majority of the increase was tax revenues in the current year. In the next category here is expenditures by function, which is how they're presented in the report, the categories down there. You'll see that expenditures also increased in 2014, approximately $2 million, or 10%, primarily in the general government categories. And in the report, you'll see budget-to-actual comparisons too, which is usually what people are interested in seeing, as well as just as far as how the actuals compare to budget. This slide here summarizes the net position, or basically the equity, of the governmental activities category. The equity or net position is presented in three categories in your CAFER. The primary one in the blue is the net investment in capital assets, so basically the portion of net position that's invested in capital assets, which for a city is always going to be by far your largest category. Then you've got your restricted classification, and then the yellow represents unrestricted year-over-year. So for the most part, they're pretty consistent. Net position or net investment in capital assets decreased a bit this year, and that's really just as a result of current year depreciation expense recorded against those. This next slide here compares your general fund, unassigned fund balance. So in the general fund and all the governmental funds, fund balance, which is also equity at the fund level, can be shown as non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So here, this compares your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures that went through the general fund in the current year. So you'll see compared, 2013's in blue, 2014 is in yellow, so the unassigned fund of balance compared to expenditures is 72%. And then similar to what I mentioned, the categories in the general fund, this is the classification, so the blue is the unassigned that we were just looking at compared to expenditures. And then these are the other categories. Non-spendables, usually things that really won't generate cash, things like inventory or prepaid. And then restrictions are areas where a third party has put a restriction on how the net position is to be spent in the general fund. And then committed, is areas where council has approved how that portion of equity will be spent. Here is your, the operating results, a summary of the enterprise funds, so the water, sewer, those types of funds, your enterprise business ones. In the first category, you'll see operating revenue compared year-over-year. There was a slight decrease, about 5% in operating revenue. Operating expenses, those stayed pretty consistent year-over-year. What I've also noted is just depreciation, again, because enterprise funds operate like a business really, sometimes a helpful measure is to back out depreciation out of that, because that's a non-cash expenditure in the fund. So there in the fourth column, you'll see net income compared year-over-year excluding depreciation, again, since that's a non-cash item. And then there in the last category, you'll see cash flows, enterprise funds put together a cash flow, so some people find a helpful measure to see the cash flows generated from the actual operations of the enterprise funds. So you can see those compared year-over-year. So that's, I know, a very high-level summary of the financials. A couple of things I would just note in the CAFER, you know, if you were to go through the report, I know it's an easy document to get through, so things I usually like to highlight. At the beginning, you'll see what's called management's discussion and analysis. The city submits their CAFER for the GFOA certificate, and has always gotten that since they've submitted the last few years. And so one of the components they put in there is management's discussion and analysis, and it's very similar to kind of what I did at a more detailed level. It's a good place to look for a year-over-year comparison. And then in the back of the document is what's called the statistical section, and that's more of a long-term history. So the city is required to present usually 10-year schedules in a lot of categories related to revenue and debt. So like I said, I know it's not an easy document to get through, page by page, so those are kind of a good, if you're looking for trends, basically, on some of the city's results year-over-year. So as far as the required communications with city officials, the first thing, it's always nice to note, as far as our actual audit opinion that we do issue at the end of our audit, the CAFER did receive what's referred to as an unmodified or clean opinion, it's the highest opinion we can issue on financials, meaning they're presented in accordance with GAAP, no material deviations. What you'll see noted, if there was any significant accounting policies that were adopted, we'd like to highlight those, basically if they were significant enough that they changed maybe how something had been presented or accounted for in the financials in the past, and there were none this year. It'll go through, we summarize any, what's called accounting estimates, we're required to take a look at those, and it's an area where there's maybe a component of subjectivity by management. So like an example would be depreciable lives, that there's estimates there. So we just come in and make sure that as we're doing our audit, the estimates being used by management appear reasonable and consistent with what we would see with other municipalities, and those, you'll see conclusions that each of the areas we noted on those were. There was just one small audit adjustment, really a timing issue when we came in and did our audit. Basically, like I said, a document that had come in later, so management had already provided us with their trial balance. So, you know, that's something I really always like to emphasize, really, an audit should be an audit. You know, we really, we're really, with our independent standards, shouldn't be coming in and doing bookkeeping for cities. And so that's something very positive, it reflects very well in the finance department, that when we came in, we weren't happy to propose a lot of audit adjustments as a result of our work, because again, that kind of starts to get away from the audit and doing bookkeeping then. There's, I think, one uncorrected immaterial misstatement, again, that's when we find maybe an adjustment, but both management and ourselves determine it to be immaterial, so we summarize it there rather than running that adjustment through the financials, so it's immaterial. If there was any disagreements with management, those would have been discussed. We met with the finance committee while we were out here doing the audit, we would have gone through those items with that committee, there were none, so you'll just see that summarized in here as well. Future accounting pronouncements, I wanted to note that, you'll see that talked about in a footnote in the CAFER. The one that would impact the city in the future is the upcoming pension standards, the unfunded pension liabilities that'll go on balance sheets now. They've always been, the funded status of pension plans has always been disclosed in the CAFERS, but effective 2015, any unfunded portion will be put on the balance sheet as a liability. So you'll see the footnote talks about that upcoming standard. And the last item, as I mentioned, the GFOA submission, that's always, you know, another good thing. The finance department submits it, and they've gotten the certificate. You'll see the prior year certificate for the prior year CAFER in here. You know, that's kind of going above and beyond, but usually bond rating agencies look very highly upon that, you know, that a report has actually been submitted to that reviewing committee and issued that, as far as how well the CAFER's been put together. So I do like to mention that, because like I said, it's not easy to get that certificate when putting this document together, so... Any questions for me, or the presentation, or anything in the financials or the audit itself?
Any questions or comments? None? All right, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thanks, you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. It's always good news. No? All right, next on the agenda, we'll be public invited to be heard, five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, we'll move to the consent agenda. Move to approve. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is resolutions. Lisa?
Resolution 66, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and MIG Incorporated for the Civic Campus and Community Center Drive Corridor Master Plan.
Move to approve.
Second?
John?
Yes, this is the, we're asking, the council authorized the mayor to execute the contract for the Civic Center Campus and Community Center Drive project. The total is $318,892, and we're asking that this be awarded to MIG and Associates.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and CR 66 passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Winnicky.
Thank you. Next is CR 67.
CR 67, a resolution accepting the audit for the comprehensive annual financial report for the city of Northland for the year ended December 31st, 2014.
Okay, John?
Council heard the presentation by our auditors, and so this is required acceptance of that audit.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Congratulations, Jason.
Okay. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and CR 67 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 68.
CR 68, a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order to the Colorado Correctional Industries in the amount of $86,438.52 for the Recreation Center Theater Seat Replacement Project, and a 10% contingency in the amount of $8,643.
Move to approve.
Second?
Discuss... John?
Colorado Correctional Industries is a state agency, is awarded the state bid, and so because of their requirements, it's not possible for us to enter into a contract with them, so we're recommending that we award this through a purchase order instead. And this is for the theater seat replacement project.
Thank you. Discussion, comments?
I just wanted to commend staff for this, we had it budgeted for $136,950, and the bid came in at 95, basically 95,100, so a pretty significant savings from what was anticipated, so congratulations on saving, on those savings.
Any other... Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm glad that if they can be, once we install them, that they can be maybe reused if we build a new theater, so I'm thrilled that we'll take that into consideration. Yes. Any other questions or comments? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and CR 68 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 69.
CR 69, a resolution authorizing the commencement of litigation to seek to prevent and enjoin the unauthorized attempt by Adams County to impose a sales tax on retail marijuana and retail marijuana products.
Move to approve.
Second?
John?
Ask Cory to present this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The last word from Adams County is that effective July 1st of this year, they will attempt to collect the marijuana sales tax that they received voter approval in November of 2014. As council is aware, certainly it is my opinion, and I think that opinion is shared by many others, that Adams County does not have the legal authority to impose that sales tax, because counties do not have the specific legal authority to impose a special sales tax on marijuana. If council is, believes that it needs to get an opinion from a judge to stop this tax, then this resolution would authorize me as your city attorney to seek to enjoin or prevent Adams County from imposing the marijuana sales tax. We would need to file that quickly, so that the court would have an opportunity to decide before the July 1st date when the tax would otherwise go into place. The reason this is being brought forward at this time is because the legislative session did not provide any certainty. Adams County tried to get authority to impose the tax, that failed. That is certainly a factor. As council's aware, the city was also actively involved in trying to get legislation that clarified the statute regarding what authority they did and did not have for purposes of sales tax, and instead, the legislature just decided to address excise tax and not sales tax. And so thus, if council desires to seek to stop the tax, this resolution is necessary.
Thank you. Discussion? Wayne?
So since the county does not have authority to collect the tax, how are they going to collect it from the dispensaries in Northland? I mean, how are they going to force it, or hold them hostage, or threaten them, or what are they going to do?
I don't, I don't know. In their resolution, they indicated they would be adopting rules and regulations regarding that collection. They have not yet done so. My guess, and it is a guess, is that they will send them some form of a bill. They will be able to, I think, identify based on the sales tax they get, the sales tax reports they get from the Department of Revenue for the tax that's collected on their behalf by the Department of Revenue. I think they'll be able to figure out what the tax would be due, based on the percentage and the numbers they get from the Department of Revenue. But certainly, there is no specific statutory authority in state law for counties to collect sales tax, because sales tax is collected on the county's behalf by the Department of Revenue.
So if all the dispensaries in Northland decided not to pay, what would happen next?
I don't know how the county is going to attempt to enforce this, but I will be bringing forward for your consideration, in addition to this resolution, an ordinance that would, from Northland's perspective, provide guidance to those businesses on what they should do related to the county's sales tax, but ultimately, it'll be their call.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments?
So you know that I'm 100% behind commencing litigation with Adams County. I feel that we tried down at the state legislature, it didn't work our way, it didn't work the county's way, and I believe the judge, I mean, let's put it in the judge's hands, but without the statute coming from the state saying that the county can collect, I really think it should go our way, and I'm definitely behind it.
All right, any other discussion?
Joyce?
I just wanted to echo what Carol has said, and also add that with this legislation and with what the county is doing, what are they going to come to us next? You know, they can't cherry pick our businesses just because our businesses are doing well and we've allowed something that the county hasn't. So the next thing they're going to do is come in and say, gee, tires are selling well, let's go ahead and add a tax onto that, or something else like that. And I think that this sets a bad precedence at the county level for trying to come in and cherry pick our businesses, and I don't think that it's fair. While I don't want to get into another battle with the county, we've had too many of those over the past couple of years. It's still not right, and I think it's a way to protect our citizens. It's also an unfair business advantage for the county to come in and tax our businesses when others aren't. So I think it's very important that we're doing this and standing up for our rights as a city and for our businesses.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and CR 69 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now recess the Special City Council meeting and bring together the Marijuana Licensing Board. Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carol Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snetsinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge.
I'm here.
Councilmember Carrico.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky.
Here.
Thank you.
I should be sitting there.
You want to switch?
Sure.
Next is the approval of minutes from May 11th, 2015. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and the minutes pass unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 70.
I will defer to...
You can read the...
Read the title, though. I know.
That's okay, we can just go forward without the title.
Okay.
At your last meeting, the licensee sought a modification of premise that included several units, three of the four units for which the... Three of the four units for which the modification was sought were within the two-hundred-foot boundary from residential property. The first item on your agenda would authorize a modification of premise to include only the unit that is not within the radius of two-hundred feet. There is a margin of error in the planning department's radius and based on that margin of error, I think staff is comfortable that it does, that A-four, unit A-four doesn't fall within the two-hundred-foot. So, if you look at the application that was submitted by the licensee here, their request is to expand their license to add unit A-four and so that is being handled separately. And so, we would ask you to consider whether to modify the premise for A-four only. They have a subsequent request, which I want to discuss separately about reconsideration of the remainder of your decision, but this can be done as a standalone item to allow the modification to include only A-four.
Thank you. Discussion?
So, is A-four within the radius?
It is not. So, it is outside the radius. So, in other words, it is still, it is compliant. There is a portion of A-four that is cut ever so slightly, but there's also a margin of error and so that's why we can't say with certainty. So, that's why at least staff's recommendation is that we're comfortable that it is outside that two-hundred-foot boundary.
So, what's, so what's, what's inside or what stretches out?
A-five, or I'm sorry, A-one, two, and three would be within the two-hundred feet.
So, the big question is A-four.
Yes.
Other way around. So, units A-one, two, and three are closer than two-hundred feet. A-four is right at two-hundred feet. A-five, six, and seven are outside.
Okay, I got it.
And have the existing.
Got it.
Okay.
So, this is just for A-four?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
It only seems fair to allow them to do that since it is in the, in an open area and they have the adjacent locations, so it just seems like a fair thing to do.
What's?
And this is for the modifications. Right. Agreed. Okay.
What's the margin of error? Does it fall within the margin of error?
About three percent, but who knows?
Yeah, and I, the, the planning department in their measurements, I think it was like four or five feet, something very small, and that's that area that cuts A-four, so you can't, it's close enough that it just literally cuts the very corner of A-four.
All right. Any other questions?
So Cory, I'm going to ask just one more time. This A-four has nothing to do with the one that we were considering prior that was too close, less than a hu, less than the two-hundred, right?
The meet, the request at last week's meeting was for A-four, five, six, and, or I'm sorry, A-one, two, three, and four.
Okay.
All four of them. This request is only for A-four, so only for that portion that was requested at the last meeting that is outside of the two-hundred-foot radius.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Do we have motions?
Oh.
Would you like me to read the title?
Go ahead.
CR seventy, a resolution approving the modification of premises for the premises licensed by Botanicare LLC.
Judge.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed and CR seventy passes unanimously.
Okay. Now, CR seventy-one, and please, Lisa, read the.
Sure. CR seventy-one, a resolution approving on reconsideration the modification of premises for the premises licensed by Botanicare LLC.
Judge.
Second.
And so, the council is aware, there is also an alternative resolution that would be a motion to deny on reconsideration. So, this, the application filed by the licensee asked the city council to reconsider its determination at the last meeting to deny units A-one, A-two, and A-three, but what happened at the last meeting is that there was a motion to approve that failed on a four-four vote. There was also a motion to set for a hearing that failed on a four-four vote. There was also a motion to deny that could have been acted on and was not. Because it was a four-four vote, there was not a denial. There was instead the motion to approve that failed on a tie vote. And so, following the meeting, we did additional research and the council can, not because of a public hearing requirement or not because of the requirements in the retail marijuana code, but because of the procedure in that the motion to approve failed on a tie vote and everything failed on a tie vote, it has the authority to go forward and either make a motion to approve, a motion to deny, and you still have the third option, which the applicant requested at the last meeting, which is to set this for a public hearing. This is a unique circumstance in that the original premise was approved under the route of direct pedestrian access and would be approvable and would have still been approved under the radius, but the expansion of the premise takes it within that two-hundred-foot radius. So, it is a unique circumstance which I think the council has the authority to both approve or deny based on its existing ordinance. Having said that, that approval or denial is based on things like public health and safety, attributes that this council certainly could take evidence on at a public hearing and so that third option is still available if you choose it.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion, Wayne?
So, we're short one person again tonight, that even number of eight, don't know how it would ever go, because of that and it would be nice to hear what people say in that area. I'm not into really sending it out to a half-mile radius every, when you get, people are just mad at whatever, you know, you got a, you got a sign shop showing up somewhere and somebody might hate that from a mile away, they show up to complain about, so I'm not into that, but I would make a motion that we move to a public hearing.
I agree.
Second.
Would there, you said the half-mile is too far, what would the notice?
I think that neighborhood, whatever that is, is that three-hundred feet or is that five-hundred feet? That, that neighborhood, that would be the concern.
The people that are within the radius, I mean, that, that even seems fairer, yeah.
Well, the, the two-hundred-foot just touches it, though, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't include the people, people in the residential area that it's adjacent to because it would go just to the edge.
How about the two-hundred feet from the edge of the building?
Same thing. It's still going to be pretty close. What, what I would suggest is if you're not going to go with the half-mile, that you look to your zoning ordinance and let me.
Oh, yeah, right here.
To see what they would, for a rezoning application, to see what the distance requirements, because it is less than the half-mile.
So Cory, just on top of that, if it's four-four again, can that just go continuously? I mean, we'd have to keep rehearing it until it either was approved or denied with a five, four, or what?
You don't have to. You still have the authority to not, not accept additional applications, but this gives you the authority to reconsider when you otherwise wouldn't because reconsideration normally requires something new. Here, you just didn't have a denial. It was the failure on the four-four vote. The zoning ordinance has a five-hundred-foot distance.
Five-hundred-foot.
That's in my motion, then. If that's okay with who seconded it.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Is it okay?
I thought I did.
At the same time, but I, I don't want to move forward unless we are going to notify those residents nearby, so.
Are you good with five-hundred feet, though? I am too, so.
So, it's five-hundred feet. You're okay with five-hundred feet. Joe, you had a comment.
I have a question. So, I, I want to make sure that I heard you right, that under the, the, the old ordinance that, within walking distance or whatever, we approved this or we said this was good or what did we do?
You approved units A-five, A-six, and A-seven because they were, under the old ordinance, the route of direct pedestrian access, they did not, they were eligible.
Okay. So, that's A-five, A-six, and A-seven.
Yes. And under the two-hundred-foot radius, you get to the exact same place. A-five, A-six, and A-seven are still eligible.
Okay.
Under the radius, A-four with the margin of error is also eligible. However, under the radius, if A-one, two, and three were stand, a standalone application, that was the only thing you were considering on a new license, they would not be eligible. What the ordinance does not contemplate is a modification of premise where you have an existing license that is compliant and is expanded into an area that is within that two-hundred-foot, even if, in this case, the entrance, for example, is at a location that is compliant.
Right. Well, we made no prior commitment.
Correct.
Prior to us changing it.
That is correct.
That these would be good to go.
No, the only thing that is, the term, the common term is grandfathered. I don't think that's the right term under these circumstances, but what the, what the ordinance says is that the location of the licensed premise is determined at the time of the new license. So, as it relates to the existing licensed premise, even if the change to radius had resulted in those being non-compliant, the license would have still been valid.
Right. But nothing new.
Right. And so, it doesn't apply to the expansion. You have the authority to go either way.
I just want to make sure that we haven't said, you know what, it's not a problem.
Correct. You have none.
And I don't have a problem going to public hearing, but I just want everybody to think about this. We do this and we approve this, then it's a free-for-all. And we already have, we already have, well, we already have some issues, so just keep that in mind.
But I think we need to look at each applicant on an individual basis as they come forward and look at each criteria appropriately.
I don't think that would be fair, but.
To look at each one individually?
Yeah, because you can't separate the people out. I mean, it's, this is the business.
Right.
And, and I don't think any of this analysis is intended to address the people or the business. The analysis is intended to address the impact on the community and whether the addition, based on it being within that two-hundred-foot radius, could be deemed by council to be either acceptable, based on the language in the ordinance, or not. And, and that's going to be, there's, will be evidence presented, you may have public testimony and then you'll be able to make a decision.
Okay. I mean, it's just, it's just going to go in a big circle, that's what's going to happen.
So, is there any discussion on, I mean, Jean, I'm sorry.
Clarification first. Do we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
What is that motion?
We actually have two motions. One is.
You only have one at a time.
Right. One is to approve CR seventy-one, approval on reconsideration of the modification of premises application for Botanicare LLC. The second motion is to continue reconsideration of the modification of premises application filed by Botanicare LLC to set a public hearing on the application for, and I would need a public hearing date, and to provide notice of the hearing in accordance with Northland Municipal Code zoning ordinance.
Okay, Cory. We've got a motion to adopt and we're not tailing, we're not mod, we don't have on the agenda to call, to call for the, what you just talked about.
Your public hearing?
This is the same scenario, I think, as the last meeting, which this is simply to continue it, to notice it for a public hearing. So, I, I think based on the discussion at the last meeting, that takes precedence under the parliamentary rules of procedure because it's neither an approval or a denial, it's a continuance and setting for a public hearing.
So, what do we do now? Both the first, first one and then the second or we'll assume that the second motion takes precedence?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, we're moving to set it for a hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and I would suggest as, to give time for the notices to go out and to comply with the language and it's fifteen days' notice under the zoning ordinance and with I think to be safe, I'd go with the June twenty-second council meeting date.
Is there any other discussion?
I, I just want to be clarified in one thing. And I guess not having them talk at all either, it makes it difficult. I think in their mind, when they got in there, they always thought about going all the way across the building from day one. I'm sure they don't. And, and I still, when I'm looking at the building here and you're looking, as a pedestrian goes from that, one of those houses over there, out the front door, down the sidewalk, crossing the street, if you're crossing the street legally there, which I don't know if you are or not, coming across, walking in front of the building, I say that is over or darn close to two-hundred feet itself.
You can certainly develop an evidentiary record at the public hearing on that fact as well, so.
I think somebody needs to measure that.
Okay.
Wheel it off to the exact foot.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, so you open the vote.
Hold on, what do we vote on? Let me.
Public hearing.
Okay, got you, okay, that's okay.
The vote is open. Councilmember Brown?
I know.
I'm sorry. I apologize. The vote is closed and the motion to continue reconsideration of the modification of premises application filed by Botanicare LLC to set a public hearing on the application for June twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, and to provide notice of the hearing in accordance with the Northland Municipal Code zoning ordinance passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now recess the marijuana licensing board and reconvene the regular council meeting and we'll move to communications. Jean?
I'm in.
All right. So, I'm a little bit of a crier, but I just wanted to really compliment the PD for the great service that they offered for Beth on Friday night. It was really respectful and a really great experience and I also wanted to thank her for her forty-one years and then the police vigil was really great and I do wish that more residents would come out and experience that. It is a truly amazing event and I just hope that next year, maybe we could do a little bit more outreach to let the residents know because many of them came because they were just at the park or driving by, so anything we can do to increase the exposure on that would be great. And then I attended the FACE performance on Friday night and I was blown away at how wonderful that was. It was sold out and it was my first experience seeing them and I do hope we could bring them back next year and buy your tickets early if we do.
Very good. Thank you for the Beth, Beth Carmasino send-off. It was fabulous and it was very tasteful and it was, it was really nice. I know most of us were there and really appreciate the effort you guys all put into it, so thank you for that. That was it. I just want to say thanks.
I would like to say that the Art on Parade installation of the new sculptures has begun. I, Michael said there were three in already, so please go over, check it out, but the, it will be, God, what am I trying to say? So, the first concert is July first. In tandem with that will be the Art on Parade grand opening. So, go over on July first, enjoy the concert and look at the new sculptures going in. We've got some really great ones. I know the sunflower is already over there and it's really cool, not that I'm trying to get a vote for the sunflower, but it looks really good. So, you know, please join in and get your votes in. And the other thing, and I have to echo what Marcy said about all the fallen officer memorial, all of the things that you had last week were great and tear-inducing for sure for me. And, let me think. I attended a cappella, last a cappella FACE also, last one, they're going to try and get them back next year. Michael said they're probably going to cost more next year, but they'll try and get them back, maybe they'll have to raise the ticket prices, so anyway, that's it for me.
I have to agree with everyone that spoke about Law Enforcement Week and also the tribute that you paid to Beth. It was very nice and what got me was at the very end, when she called AdCom and signed off, I just lost it when she did that. That was very, very emotional and I know her family also appreciated everything. Just as a mind jogger for people, that Stonehocker is part of the community yard sale in June, so if you have any items that you want to donate to the sale, please let me know or there's someone on the historic commission, so. Joe?
And I was both, at both PD events, chiefs, just let your people know and the volunteers know, they did a great job and thanks Beth for that forty-one years of service, amazing. So, definitely on two great events and hope that, what Marcy said, hopefully we can get more people there. Hey, just on a personal note, I have to say that I went to Westminster and went and did their, their Hard as Nails, five K, Mud, Obstacle Challenge and took me a little over an hour to run. to run it and stuff, torn up, I got blood from chest to toes, so, but it was, it was exciting, so I'm glad I did, and thanks to Westminster for hosting it, so.
I just want to echo everybody else, and congratulations to Beth Carmasino for all of her years of service to the city. I also want to congratulate all of our officers that were recognized this year at the awards ceremony for them, and I think it would be a nice touch to put on our website, a congratulations to them for their service. And it, like everybody has said, when Beth signed off, that was, that was pretty darn rough, and so thanks to AdCom and the other jurisdictions for allowing the time for that to happen because I know that was probably a pretty tricky endeavor to get them to stop calls for those few minutes while Beth did that. And just come on out, everybody, for the summer, call of our events, and come take advantage of all the great things that we have here in the city.
Lisa?
Nothing.
Joe?
I wanted to advise counsel that this week, or this past week, I signed a contract for the purchase of three Fraco shares. These were the shares that were originally authorized by council back in October, and then there was a delay in being able to go through all the research and everything to make that happen. So we finally got through that whole process, counsel. I asked counsel about a month ago if you were still in support of that, and you were, the purchase, so you were. So the cost's $185,000 per share for a total of $555,000.
Cory?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next is, on the agenda is public invited to be heard. Would anyone like to speak to counsel for up to three minutes?
Mayor, what about the same deal?
They are not here.
They actually left?
They left, yeah. So I'll, we'll just move it to the next agenda, then. Yes.
Sherry Hackett, I just wanted to tell you all, thank you very much for the reconsideration, and we will do everything we need to do to make you understand what we need, and as a business, we're happy to be in Northland and we want to stay in Northland, so thank you again.
Thanks, Lauren. Anyone else want to speak to counsel? We're up to three minutes. Hearing done, approach. Oh, sorry, come on up.
I'm retired staff, sorry, you knew, I'm one of the medical patients here at Botanicare came in support. I just want to thank you guys for taking the time and considering what they're asking and that they are supporting wounded warriors to help get off narcotics and things with their medications. They're the only dispensary doing the medication work that they're doing that doesn't involve THC and getting stoned off the medicine. It's very hard for us to find a dispensary like this that'd be more than willing to help its patients, so I appreciate you guys' thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish to speak to counsel? Seeing no other approach, I will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5 Perand D of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding the Iran Center. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now in executive session.